Good morning. Welcome. I'm Dan Gorodnik, Chair of the City Planning Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's meeting of October 22nd. We're going to kick things off with a few votes before getting to public hearings today. We're going to begin with a vote on the Coney Island Business Improvement District encompassing approximately 360 tax lots and around 230 businesses. The proposed bid would provide services aiming to support, maintain, and enhance conditions along Mermaid and Surf avenues, including sanitation, public safety, streetscape, beautification, public programming, and more. Next, we're going to vote on a proposed follow-up action to update the Special Atlantic Avenue Mixed-Use District. These actions fulfill a commitment that the Department of City Planning made to council members Crystal Hudson and Chi Ose during the planning process for the Atlantic Avenue Mixed-Use Plan, which the council, as you all know, approved in May. On several blocks between Atlantic Avenue and Bergen Street and Grand Avenue and Franklin Avenue, the incentive FAR to support non-residential uses would be limited to specific types of uses, including light industrial, community facilities, arts, and repair. This will help incentivize the light industrial and creative economies on these blocks. After that, we're going to vote on a proposal by the New York City Parks Department and Citywide Administrative Services to enable the selection and acquisition of privately-owned properties in Brooklyn Community District 5 and Queens Community District 3 for future park development. This is part of an ongoing city initiative to help ensure more New Yorkers live close to public parks and close the so-called Walk to a Park gap. Next is a vote on Praze Tabernacle at 101, I'm sorry, 10811 Sutton Boulevard in Jamaica, Queens. This application, which comes from the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, would facilitate the disposition of a city-owned lot to enable a church to undergo maintenance. Heading to the Tote Hill neighborhood of Staten Island, we'll vote on several proposals to facilitate the construction of single-family homes. At 47 Fairview, I'm sorry, Farview Place, a SNAD authorization is being sought to enable the development of a two-story home with an in-ground pool and circular driveway. Then we'll vote on authorizations to allow the development of a two-story home at 142 Flag Place. Finally, we're going to vote on a modification to a previously-approved authorization at Jenna Lane. Involving the removal of trees and changes to topography, this action would facilitate the development of a single-family home. After that, we're going to hold two public hearings. The first is on a proposal to eliminate a portion of Eagle Street in Greenpoint, Brooklyn. Extending from West Street to the East River, the proposed demapping would better reflect ownership and use patterns and clarify maintenance responsibilities for private sewer infrastructure serving new waterfront development. Our second and final hearing today is on a proposal to map a commercial overlay at 1815 Francis Lewis Boulevard in Clearview, Queens. This action would bring an existing medical office building into conformance with underlying zoning. The proposal does not call for any new development at the site. Finally, we're going to hold a special review session for modifications made by the City Council to the Jamaica Neighborhood Plan. That's what we've got today. Madam Secretary, over to you. Let's get this meeting started.
Good morning. This is the City Planning Commission Public Meeting held remotely and in person in the CPC Hearing Room 120 Broadway Lower Concourse. Today is Wednesday, October 22nd, 2025. I will now call the roll. Chair Gorodnik.
Here.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Present.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Here.
Commissioner Crowell.
Present.
Commissioner Doak.
Here.
Commissioner Gold.
Here.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Here.
Commissioner Carmody.
Here.
Commissioner Mann is absent. Commissioner Marden is on Zoom.
Here.
Commissioner Osorio.
Here.
Commissioner Rampershad is on Zoom.
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, October 8th, 2025.
Great. On the minutes, I make a motion to approve those minutes of October 8th. The vice chair has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Minutes are approved.
Scheduling: Calendar numbers 1 and 2, scheduling Wednesday, November 5th, 2025, for a public hearing to be held in person in the CPC Hearing Room 120 Broadway and remotely.
Great. On the resolution, I make a motion to approve it. The vice chair has seconded. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay? Okay. The resolution is approved.
The next part of the calendar is the reports section on page 5. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 3, Coney Island Business Improvement District, CD-13, N. 260074 BDK. In the matter of an application for a business improvement district concerning Coney Island bid, for a favorable report on calendar number 3, Chair Gorodnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
What?
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Carmody.
Yes.
Commissioner Marden.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 3. Calendar number 4, Atlantic Avenue Mixed-Use Plan Aim-Up Follow-Up Action, CD-8, N. 250217ZRK. In the matter of an application for a zoning tax amendment concerning aim-up follow-up action, for a favorable report on calendar number 4, Chair Gorodnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
What?
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Doak.
Recused.
Recused. Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
I'm glad that the Community Board overwhelmingly voted yes for this, or I'm voting yes.
Commissioner Carmody.
Yes.
Commissioner Marden.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Thanks so much to the Department of City Planning's Brooklyn Office for stressing the one condition that the Brooklyn Board President set forth in their comments, which in agreement with the Community Board recommends to lift the 10,000-square-feet restriction. I fully agree with their analysis, and also because they demonstrate that there's a market for smaller industrial uses. Keeping the restriction, however, further increases the risk of having a mixed-use district without industrial uses, leaving smaller industrial companies and their workers behind. Having said this, I vote yes on the incentive because these industrial businesses deserve all the support they can get, hoping that this is corrected in the next stage of the planning process. Thank you.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 4. Borough of Queens and Brooklyn, calendar numbers 5 and 6. Calendar number 5, C. 250298 PCK, Brooklyn CD-5 Walk to Park. Calendar number 6, C. 250297 PCQ, Queens CD-3 Walk to Park. And the matter of applications for site selections and acquisitions concerning Queens CD-3 Walk to Park and Brooklyn CD-5 Walk to Park, for favorable reports as modified on calendar numbers 5 and 6. Chair Gorodnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
I would like to thank the department for the work that was done on this and for the continued effort as reflected in the revised report that they provided, that we will continue to look at the issue of how private space is used in the analysis of adequacy of open space resources. I think it's very important that we do that so that we're actually targeting the places that have no access to open space as opposed to places that may have a large amount of open space but it's private, like a Nitro Development or Dytown. But I would like to vote aye and to acknowledge and thank the department.
Commissioner Cerulo.
I just want to say I'm very happy to be following Commissioner Benjamin and her vote because I too want to thank the department for the follow-up on the issues that have been raised during the public review on this issue as beautifully articulated by Commissioner Benjamin. So thank you, and I vote aye.
Commissioner Crowell.
I similarly vote aye and want to note that I think this will be a very important tool, and I appreciate the department's work on this. As someone who has worked in and around land acquisition for parks during his city career, I think this can be an incredibly valuable opportunity for us to do proper long-term planning. So many thanks to the department.
Commissioner Doak.
Aye.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Carmody.
I also align myself with Commissioner Benjamin's comments. Thank you, Commissioner, so much for what you said, and thank you to the department, and I vote yes.
Commissioner Marden.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
I vote yes, and I also want to stress the Brooklyn Board President's condition recommending a long-term city commitment to a coordinated capital strategy to, A, successfully acquire the properties, and B, to guarantee the development of the proposed or the potential new parks and open spaces. Thank you.
Commissioner Rampershad recused on 6, but on 5.
On 5, yes. And I also like to thank the department for all the work they put in on this. Thank you.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 5 and 6. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers 7 and 8, 47 Farview Place SNAD Authorization, CD-2, calendar number 7, N. 250127ZAR. Calendar number 8, N. 250128ZAR. In the matter of applications for the grant of authorizations concerning 47 Farview Place SNAD Authorization, for the adoption of calendar numbers 7 and 8, Chair Gorodnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Carmody.
Yes.
Commissioner Marden. Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Calendar numbers 7 and 8 have been adopted. Calendar numbers 9 and 10, 142 Flag Place, CD-2, calendar number 9, N. 240258ZAR. Calendar number 10, N. 240259ZAR. In the matter of applications for the grant of authorizations concerning 142 Flag Place, for the adoption of calendar numbers 9 and 10, Chair Gorodnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Carmody.
Yes.
Commissioner Marden.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Calendar numbers 9 and 10 have been adopted. Calendar number 11, Jenna Lane Modification, CD-2, M. 930529BZAR. In the matter of an application for a modification to a previously-approved authorization concerning Jenna Lane Modification, for the adoption of calendar number 11, Chair Gorodnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Carmody.
Yes.
Commissioner Marden.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
Calendar number 11 has been adopted. Borough of Queens, Supplemental Calendar Number 1, Praze Tabernacle, CD-12, N. 260045HNQ. In the matter of an application for UDOT designation and project approval concerning Praze Tabernacle, for a favorable report on Supplemental Calendar Number 1, Chair Gorodnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Carmody.
Yes.
Commissioner Marden.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on Supplemental Calendar Number 1. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page 8.
Great. We're going to have a couple of items today. As you know, members of the public are invited to come and join us for three minutes, either here or on Zoom, and let's get right into the first item of the day.
Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 12, Eagle Street Demapping, CD-1, C. 250033MMK, Public Hearing, in the matter of an application for a city map amendment concerning Eagle Street Demapping.
Great. And I have Nick Williams from Freed Frank to present. Welcome. Whenever you are ready, you have three minutes. Make sure that microphone is turned on for you.
There you go. Can you hear me? All right. Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Nick Williams. I'm with Freed Frank, representing the applicant, BOP Greenpoint D LLC, for the city map amendment. I have a very short presentation, after which I'm happy to answer any questions. The reason the presentation is so short is there is no proposed project or proposed development. This is a technical cleanup to remove a paper street that was mapped, or has been mapped over private property since the 1800s, prior to the incorporation of Brooklyn into the city. The property is designated and partially improved as waterfront public access areas. It also includes below-grade water and sewer utility infrastructure for the adjacent mixed-income development. In connection with the DEP site connection approvals for that infrastructure, the applicant agreed to pursue this demapping to remove any potential residual liability to the agency by virtue of the mapped street. This slide shows the project area outlined in red. The applicant owns the property shaded in yellow, which is the Eagle and West Development Project. Some information about that in a moment. It's on the Greenpoint waterfront in North Brooklyn, just south of Newtown Barge Park. The property that's mapped as an extension of Eagle Street includes a number of tax lots and separate ownership. And again, as I mentioned, there's private utility infrastructure constructed beneath the street serving the Eagle and West project. The property is part of the waterfront access plan for Greenpoint and Williamsburg. You can see here it was designated as a location for an upland connection connecting to the shore public walkway, the public esplanade. The northern portion of that upland connection has been constructed in connection with the Eagle and West project, and the southern portion has been approved and will be constructed in connection with development to the south. This, just for reference, is the Eagle and West project. It's three interconnected buildings, a total of 745 rental units, of which 224 are affordable. And there's 50,000 square feet of public open space that was constructed, including a waterfront esplanade, a 60-foot-wide connection along the northern portion of the property adjacent to Newtown Barge Park, and the public connection along the sidewalk south within the bounds of the property to be demapped. This slide shows the current city map, as well as an overlay of the aerial showing the location. You can see the street is mapped out to a terminus somewhere in the water between the bulkhead and the pier headline. Again, this mapping was in place in the 1800s, prior to the incorporation of the property or of Brooklyn into the city of New York. And as far as we are aware, it has always been in private ownership. One thing I should note, from a zoning perspective, because it is a privately-owned map street, the property generated floor area for use in the adjacent development, the demapping will not affect the floor area that's available from the property. And this is the proposed city map amendment.
Great. Thank you very much. Let me just pose one question to you here. The infrastructure that is below the street, below this space, which will determine here what it ultimately will be called, this is all private infrastructure serving the building next door.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
So there's no city infrastructure underneath?
There's no city infrastructure. There is Con Ed utility infrastructure serving, again, serving the building, but there's no other city infrastructure.
Okay. Thank you. Let me see if there are other questions here. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We also have Vincent Jenkins, who wishes to be heard on this item, on Zoom.
Vincent Jenkins is not in the Zoom yet.
Not in the Zoom?
No.
Okay. All right. So we will close the hearing on calendar 12, and we'll move on to the next item of the day.
Borough of Queens, calendar number 13, 1815 Francis Lewis Boulevard Commercial Overlay, CD-7, C. 250272ZMQ, Public Hearing, in the matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning 1815 Francis Lewis Boulevard Commercial Overlay.
Great. We have Todd Dale to present, and welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. It's been a while. Last time I was here was 22 Reed Street, so it's been some time. Good morning, Todd Dale, on behalf of this application. This application seeks a zoning map amendment to extend a C-12 commercial district overlay within an existing R-32 district to encompass Block 4748, Lot 35, rezoning the site to an R-32 C-12 district. As noted, it's Lot 35 within Block 4748. It, its site encompasses the entire block that's bounded by 18th Avenue, 160th Street, and Francis Lewis Boulevard. It's located within Community Board 7's district and City Council District 19, which is Council of Wintevicki Paladino's district. The site has approximately 2,990 square feet of lot area and is currently zoned R-32 with no special district. And the current development is a two-story building containing medical office use. There's multiple tenants. The site is characterized by a mix of uses, residential, commercial, community facility, to the residential interior blocks to the east and the west, along Francis Lewis's primarily commercial and community facility uses, including a gas station, a medical office, a restaurant, and a bank to the south. This proposal seeks to connect a existing C-12 commercial overlay immediately to the north and the south of the site to create a continuous C-12 overlay. This has been the condition since the zoning map was established in 1961, and this proposal is essentially seeking to connect the dots, as it were, between the north and the south. The result would allow the current use to be as-of-right. As noted, it is a existing two-story building that's currently occupied by medical office use. This building predates the current zoning resolution in 1961. It was established through variances that were granted in 1960, prior to the current zoning resolution. Those historical variances established the use in what was at that time an Area F residential district. They also allowed the building to be constructed within 15 feet of the street, to allow signage that wasn't allowed in the Area F district, and for lot coverage. Should this be granted, the commercial overlay would allow the current use to be as-of-right, and it would be the consistent mapping. This use has been there for, you know, over 60 years. There's no changes proposed to the uses, continuing the medical office or professional office uses as allowed by variance, and no change is proposed in the bulk of the building. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Benjamin.
One quick question.
Sure.
Is this a medical office or a dental office? Earlier, I had asked the question, why, if this is a medical office, you couldn't just come in as a community facility?
So, good question. There's multiple tenants. There is a dental office there. The actual primary owner is a dentist who owns the building, but there are also other non-dental medical offices there, community facility uses. During the course of its operation, it has primarily been community facility medical offices, but the variance that was originally granted in 1960 allowed either professional offices or medical offices, and they have had professional offices in the past as tenants have changed. And this grant would just allow both of those options going forward, consistent with what the original variance grant was.
And the applicant has no intention of having retail?
No, not at all. Just, they want to keep the offices there. Really, the primary goal behind this is that it will help spare them, you know, the repetitive cost of going back for the variances again and again. It allows some flexibility with leases and financing with banks because there's always been issues about the certificate occupancy, you know, is set to expire before they renew the variance again and again.
And you indicated that when this was an F, you exceeded the bulk that was allowable under that designation. Under the C-12, are you within the bulk limitations there?
So, yes. The original grant, the bulk variances that were required were that it was within 15 feet of the street and lot coverage at the time. I'm not sure how this applied to the current zoning regulations, but the current building has approximately 5,900 square feet, which is about a 1.97 FAR, so it would be in excess of the bulk, but as permitted by the grant of the variance. So it is built to, or perhaps slightly beyond, the current bulk requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Okay. I have no other questions for you. So thank you very much for your presentation. Now I'm going to turn to public commentary. Do we have Vincent Jenkins on Zoom?
I believe he's experiencing Zoom technical difficulties and trying to join at the moment.
Okay. So let's give him a moment, since this is our, the last moment of our last public hearing of the day, so we will filibuster here for a moment. We're just going to work on, for a moment, on getting our member of the public access here, and stay tuned.
Mr. Jenkins, if you are watching on YouTube, you should have been sent an email to join on Zoom. You could click to join. You do not need the Zoom app. You could join on your browser.
What are our options? Do we just say submit written testimony? Okay. You going to say it?
It looks like Mr. Jenkins is not in the Zoom. However, we do welcome written testimony from Mr. Jenkins, and we'll explain that at the end of the public meeting.
Great. Thank you very much. Are there other members of the public wishing to be heard on this item? I see none. Nobody else here in the room? Okay. With that, we will close the hearing on calendar number 13, the commercial overlay at 1815 Francis Lewis Boulevard. Madam Secretary, what other items? We're just going to work on, for a moment, on getting our member of the public access here, and stay tuned.
Mr. Jenkins, if you are watching on YouTube, you should have been sent an email to join on Zoom. You could click to join. You do not need the Zoom app. You could join on your browser.
What are our options? Do we just say submit written testimony?
It looks like Mr. Jenkins is not in the Zoom. However, we do welcome written testimony from Mr. Jenkins, and we'll explain that at the end of the public meeting.
Great, thank you very much. Are there other members of the public wishing to be heard on this item? I see none. Nobody else here in the room? Okay, with that, we will close the hearing on calendar number thirteen, the commercial overlay at eighteen fifteen, Francis Lewis Boulevard. Madam Secretary, what other items do we have pending before us today?
Chair Gratik, there is no other business support of the commission for the public meeting, but I do have some public information to share. For those of you who are unable to, or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online through DCP's website, or by mailing your comments to City Planning Commission, Calendar Information Office, one-twenty Broadway, thirty-first floor, New York, New York, one-zero-two-seven-one.
Great, thank you very much. And with that, the time is ten-thirty-one, and we are adjourned, but please don't go far. Welcome, everybody, to the special review session of the City Planning Commission. Today's date is October twenty-second. Madam Secretary, let me turn this over to you.
Good morning, and welcome to the City Planning Commission's Special Review Session for Wednesday, October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five. The time is ten-thirty-two AM, and a quorum is present. The first item on our agenda is on the Jamaica Neighborhood Plan in Queens' Community Districts eight and twelve. The City Council proposes to modify the zoning map and zoning tax amendments, and staff believe these modifications are within scope. Our presenter is Shruti Basara Shakhia.
Hello, Shruti.
Good morning, Chair Gratik, commissioners. Again, good morning, everyone. I'm Shruti Basara Shakhia, the Borough Planner in the Queens Office at the City Planning, and part of the team working on Jamaica Neighborhood Plan. We are pleased to be back for the scope determination on the City Council's proposed modifications to the Jamaica Neighborhood Plan. So as a recap, the city is seeking the following latest actions as part of the Jamaica Neighborhood Plan: a zoning map amendment, a zoning tax amendment, URAP and disposition approval, and a city map change. As you remember, these actions were certified March twenty of this year, and would result in over twelve thousand housing units, of which four thousand units would be permanently income restricted under the largest mapped MIH area in the city. The plan would also create over two million square feet of new commercial and community facility spaces, adding more than seven thousand jobs in the area. Now, I would like to walk through the modifications to the plan the City Council has proposed in the next few slides. Generally, these modifications are proposed to address concerns the City Council has heard during this review process around heights in the recent single-family residential areas. Several major areas within the project area are subject to these council modifications. Affected areas include the downtown core, shown in blue outline. Sections along the southern corridors are outlined in green, and the industrial area is outlined in pink. The first modification relates to the area within the downtown core, south of L I R tracks, between Ninety-Fourth and Ninety-Fifth Avenues. This two-block area outlined in blue was proposed to be rezoned as C six-three, the equivalent to an R nine district. The council seeks to modify the proposed C six-three to C six-two A zoning district, which is an equivalent to our R eight A district. The proposed modification to C six-two A zoning district in the area would reduce the residential FIR from nine point two to seven point two, and lower the maximum building height to one forty-five feet. We estimate that taking the zoning down from nine point two to seven point two FIR could lead to the loss of approximately fifty-two housing units. A second modification within the downtown core area includes the blocks along Southern Boulevard between Ninety-seventh and Liberty Avenues. The City Council seeks to modify the proposed C six-three, equivalent to R nine-one district in this area, to C six-two A zoning district. This change reduces the residential FIR from ten point eight to seven point two, and lowers the maximum building height to one forty-five feet, resulting in a loss of approximately one hundred thirty-nine housing units. Now, we move on to the modifications affecting the southern corridor areas. This modification relates to the area south of Liberty Avenue, along Southern Boulevard, between Hundred Forty-sixth and Hundred Forty-Eighth Streets. The proposal, as certified, was to map this area as R eight X. The City Council seeks to change the zoning to R seven X zoning district. This modification, I'm sorry. This modification would lower the residential FIR from seven point two to six point oh, and maximum height of one forty-five feet. Notably, as part of the reasonable worst-case methodology, we estimate this change would not result in any loss of units. Now, moving on to the area along to the southern corridors on Southern Boulevard, between Liberty Avenue and Tuskegee Airmen Way, the proposed zoning district for this area was R seven X, and the council seeks to modify it to R seven A, reducing the residential FIR from six to five point zero one, and lowering the maximum building height to one hundred and fifteen feet. As there are no projected sites in this area, we do not expect a loss of number, a loss in number of potential housing units. And the next set of modifications concern the area south of Tuskegee Airmen Way, along the Southern Boulevard. The council seeks to modify the proposed R seven A zoning for the area between Tuskegee Airmen Way and Lakewood Avenue to R six A zoning district. This could reduce the residential FIR to three point nine, and maximum height to ninety-five feet. For the area between Lakewood Avenue and Hundred and Ninth Avenue, the council also seeks to modify the proposed R seven A to R six D zoning district. This change would lower the residential FIR of three point oh, and maximum height of seventy-five feet. Additionally, the council seeks to eliminate the southern tip of the proposed R seven A district, south of Hundred and Ninth Avenue, along Southern Boulevard. As a result, this area would stay in its existing R five D zoning district. Collectively, these changes to proposal would result in the loss of approximately fifty-four housing units. The next couple of modifications relate to the area along Gaia Brewer Boulevard. The council seeks to change the proposed R seven A zoning district in the area between Hundred and Seventh and Hundred and Eighth Avenues, and between Hundred and Ninth and Hundred and Tenth Avenues to R six D zoning district. This change would result in a lower residential FIR from five point zero one to three point oh, and lowers the maximum building height to seventy-five feet. The council also seeks to eliminate the proposed R six D zoning district from the area between Union Hall Street and Gaia Brewer Boulevard. And to note, the vacant city-owned sites subject to URAP as part of this application are not included in the City Council modifications. As there are no projected development sites within these boundaries, this modification would not result in loss of units, but MIH would still be mapped in these areas. Next, for the area along Gaia Brewer Boulevard, between Hundred and Tenth Avenue and Linden Boulevard, the council seeks to change the proposed R seven A, as certified, to R six A zoning district. This change would reduce the residential FIR to three point nine, and maximum building height to ninety-five feet. The department projects a loss of approximately one hundred thirty-two units across three projected sites from the certified proposal to propose council modification. The MIH would still be mapped in these areas. The City Council also proposed several modifications along Merrick Boulevard. The next few modifications apply to the areas outlined in green. They are the notches along east and west of Merrick Boulevard. The council seeks to change the proposed R six A district in these notches to R six D zoning district. This change in proposal would result in a lower residential FIR of three point oh, and maximum building height of seventy-five feet. The change would result in the loss of approximately twenty-one units from what was projected under R six A district. Moving further south along Merrick Boulevard and south of Archie Spigner Park, the council seeks to change the proposed R seven A to an R six A zoning district. This change would result in a lower residential FIR of three point nine, and maximum building height of ninety-five feet. It would result in the loss of approximately ninety-two housing units from what was projected under an R seven A zoning district. The final modification pertains to the industrial area north of Liberty Avenue, located within the eastern I B Z sound. The council proposes modifying the proposed M two-three A zoning district to M one-two A zoning district. This change would reduce the allowable manufacturing FIR from four point oh to three point oh, and lower the maximum height to ninety-five feet. Additionally, M one-two A zoning would impose ten thousand square feet size limitations on gross and convenience retail resources in this area. The mandatory inclusionary housing MIH map would need to be updated as a result of the proposed City Council modifications, particularly to reflect the areas removed from the rezoning plan. MIH options one, two, and three are proposed as part of the plan certified in March. The City Council has since proposed the following modifications and refinement to the proposed MIH map. MIH option one, two, and three to remain as certified in areas outlined in pink, encompassing the southern corridors that includes Gaia Brewer Boulevard, Liberty Avenue, and Southern Boulevard, and the south core area, south of L I R tracks. While the areas north of Hundred and First, Hundred and One Avenue outlined in yellow, comprising the north core and downtown core areas, would be mapped with MIH options one and three. MIH options one and three require to set aside affordable housing units for households with lower percentage of AMI, that is, forty to sixty percent AMI, while option two sets aside affordable housing units for households earning income averaging eighty percent AMI. The modifications apply to the special downtown Jamaica district boundary, as it is determined with the updated rezoning boundary. The two areas on the southern corridors are removed from the special district. The department is also advancing a tax amendment to a specific provision within the special downtown Jamaica district related to vesting provisions in ZR Section eleven dash three-three-three. The council proposes, in addition to the provision shown in purple text, to further clarify, any applications may be amended one or more times prior to the adoption of the plan. But here again is the proposed zoning map, certified this spring. Under this zoning framework, over approximately twelve thousand new homes and two million square feet of commercial and community space would be created. As discussed, initial proposal focused density in the downtown area and major corridors in the neighborhood that are supported by strong transit and benefit from ground-floor And in summary, the City Council has proposed modifications to several zoning districts in the highlighted areas that would result in approximately eleven thousand eight hundred units, which is a loss of four hundred and ninety housing units from what the city had proposed. With these modifications, the proposal still remains approximately, still maintains approximately four thousand one hundred affordable units, which is a loss of approximately over a hundred MIH units as part of City Council modifications. Just concluding the presentation of the proposed modifications by the City Council. DCP believes that these modifications fall within the scope of both the latest application and environmental review. A technical one has been prepared to support the environmental impact statement. Thank you, and happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you for that. Let me see if there are questions for you. Vice Chair Knuckles.
So that's roughly a little under five percent of the projected units lost.
Yeah, there's going to be just four hundred and ninety units, unit loss.
Okay, other questions? Commissioner Goodrich?
I was actually going to follow up on that. So we have less affordable units?
Yes, there's going to be around a hundred or so units, AMI units, lots of hundred and twenty-four AMI units.
And what, in the original plan? And what happened with the stormwater? I know the council member, both council members actually, were very concerned about the stormwater and sewer protection. I just want some clarification on that.
It seemed good to take a little.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So definitely, infrastructure was a major issue for the local council member as well as the speaker. And so through this process, the city did come to, you know, a good place in sort of the investments that we're going to put into this community on top of the zoning changes, on top of mapping MIH. And so that is part of this larger package and this larger approval plan.
And the school signing, I know that there was back and forth about that, but the last, one of the last things, at least not at this stage, but after they left the city, they wanted a plan from DCP at the least about like a school citing plan for school capacity. Did they come to an agreement about that for this final part?
There is no particular location that's been cited for this plan, but...
I shouldn't say schools. I, I'm sorry. They wanted just some sort of agreement that DCP would come up with some sort of strategic plan about school capacity. I don't know that the end stage was an act... One of the things we're asking for was an additional school, but I don't know if that is their final ask at this final step. I think the final one was just a little bit less of a heavy list, which was, would be a plan from DCP about how they would deal with the capacity issue. So is that...
So similarly to the infrastructure issues, education facilities is also part of a larger sort of package and investment the city is going to make to existing facilities, as well as, as sort of a new educational facility in the area that the council, that we've worked with the councilwoman on, so that is part of it. And as well as sort of an oversight committee, so that there would be accountability, and these items, you know, that are important to the community and to the councilperson, we would have updates and talk about it, and to make sure that the city is moving in the right direction on those things. So school is part of that, and educational facility is part of that as well.
My last question is just to follow up on my first one. Why, so what is the, so we have less affordable units, and then, just please remind me again, or at least, I missed this, so I'm sorry about that, but what is it that we're getting instead of the affordable units? They took out the affordable units for...
Let me just jump in and say, so they reduced, they reduced the overall density, which, in some areas, which reduced the overall capacity for new units of housing, which included a proportional reduction in affordable units. So they lost four, what was the total number?
Four ninety.
Four ninety total units, and of those, a hundred...
Hundred twenty-nine.
Hundred twenty...
MIH.
Hundred twenty would have been enabled through MIH. So by changing the zoning districts, it just changes the overall capacity by that amount.
So the pro that, the pro that we're getting is more, what, more...
The council, the council made the changes that they made, and that will result in just that number of fewer units.
And we're still getting almost twelve thousand units as a result, and mandatory inclusionary.
No, I just wanted to clarify, like, what, you know, normally, like, for example, when there's a change like this, for example, we get less units. It might mean, like, some of them are more family-sized, for example, like, we have less units overall, but some of them are...
Yeah, this one is just a, this one is just a, straight, by changing the zoning districts, it just changes the overall capacity. Commissioner Goodrich?
I just wanted to point out that these are projected units. These are not actual units.
That's right. That's correct. Thanks for that, clerk.
Okay, other questions? Okay, so we're voting on scope. Question whether the council's changes were within the scope of the environmental review? So I, I'm sorry, Commissioner Goodrich?
Once again, once again, did they, so are there, just to quickly clarify, because this was my, this was the part I was stuck on with this project about, and a lot of the neighborhood plans, like, the actual projected rent and the breakdown with the AMI. So is there, do we have any more information about whether any of them are more, going to be more deeply affordable, or is it still, like, half of these are two thousand dollars studios?
So the AMI, so what we can tell you is the council modified the MIH options. So there is, I don't know if we could go back on this. So this is the modification. So when we certified this plan, we had mapped all three options, one, two, and three, so which gives you options of affordability, you know, average of sixty percent AMI, affordability average of eighty percent AMI, right? And so the council modifies so that the pink areas would have all three options, because they believe, like, those areas, you know, the option two would give you affordable home ownership as a way, you know, to build. And then, near the downtown core and Jamaica Center, where the market is there for more developments to happen right now, and more recently, they want to capture more sort of deeply affordable units. So for that, for the yellow area, only options one and three are going to be available.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, any other questions? Okay, all right. I'm going to seek consent by voice vote to send a scope determination letter to the City Council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Okay, all right, thank you. It's been determined these matter, these changes are in scope. Thank you very much to you all, and the Queens Office, and everybody at the Department of City Planning for your work on this, and of course, our appreciation of the City Council for their thoughtful engagement and changes. We appreciate the partnership we have with them. Madam Secretary, do we have other business pending before us today?
No, Chair Gratik, there is no other business. No, Chair Grodnik, there is no other business for the Commission today.
Okay, well, with that, thank you all very much. Thanks to those who joined us for our public hearings, and we are now adjourned.
The time is ten fifty-four AM.
Thank you.